Good evening. Welcome to Tuesday, March 22nd, 2022 regular selectmen's meeting. All of the selectmen, the select board members, not selectmen, are either here or on Zoom with us. We have our town manager, the town clerk is with us. The head of the planning board was with us today. Please stand with me and salute the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First order of business is our approval of our meeting minutes. We have a meeting minutes from March 8.
I make a motion that we approve the minutes from March 8.
I'll second the motion.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? If not, I'll go through the roll. Is Mark? Didn't hear you, Mark.
Yes.
Thank you. Noah?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
And myself as a yes. And then we have a March 15th special meeting is, uh... Do I have a motion to accept?
I make a motion to accept the minutes from March 15.
Second the motion.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? If not, I'll go through the roll. Is Mark?
Yes.
Noah?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
And myself as a yes. Thank you. All right. Our next item is a public comment. I know there's a lot of people here is for the solar farm. We do not have that as an official agenda item. Is, um, however, is, uh, we talked amongst ourselves earlier and, uh, we'll take it as a public comment session. Is, is, uh, when you speak, please come to the microphone, state your name, where you live in Burwick, and then proceed. Open for public comment.
Good evening. My name's Steve Clement. I live right on Cranberry Meadow Road, and I'm the owner of Harris State's subdivision. We're here tonight with a lot of concerns on the 259 School Street solar array. I'm not going to get into all the details about this. It's just too much to give to you guys tonight, but there's several issues on our ordinance and the protection and residential zone for this. There's issues with how some of this stuff in town with the solar arrays was started by having clear definition of the ordinance. Not quite sure how some things happened. My big concern is this thing's going into an R2 zone. This is a project I started 22 years ago at roughly about 3,500 feet of my development. When we started this project 22 years ago, we showed the town of Burwick that there was no secret that there'd be 70, 80 homes in this development. This thing is pretty much a clear cut in the backyard of a good portion of my subdivision, and there's many, many concerns with the people living in there and our investment and our value of our property. So we're here tonight to ask for moratorium so we can digest this ordinance a little bit more as a town, as people sit in these boards to have a, you know, an understanding what we think hasn't been done clearly. It's, it's, it's pretty confusing to go through it myself and, and understand it, but with the help of, uh, of some folks and my attorney and watching what other towns has come up, same issues. And some, some of these moratoriums have been put in place to have a better definition on where these things should be, you know, placed. I have nothing against the solar movement at all. I'm hearing a lot of politics about it. I know a lot of things, the trial and error that we do, and we can correct these things and make them a little bit better as we proceed, but to go from one extreme where they technically were not legal, to, to build these things and change some of the ordinance, and then to go right ahead and touch a perfectly good forest, which I impacted with subdivision, but I have many regulations of open space and lots that are 35% wooded and all types of, of protection for privacy and not to, uh, overdevelop. I live there, you know, and I, we tried to do the best with that. But for this thing to come in and, and wipe out a perfectly good area behind these houses and, you know, have a chain link fence going around, and I really have a lot of concern about the placement of this particular solar array. I do have some packets that refer to some of the steps through the town. Planning board meetings, um, this being a vote last November 2nd, 2021, to, to make some changes with this. And I, I just feel like we need to spend some time and people need to get more educated on what we actually did and what happened, uh, before we move forward with, I think, doing more of these things. So I'd like to hand those out, and I brought my attorney with me tonight just to refer to definition if there's some concerns, but, um, we, we'd like to have, you know, hopefully an answer on what you guys think we can do tonight to, to make sure something doesn't happen without really getting proper clarification on how this was all handled. So I'd like to just hand these out to you guys and...
Unfortunately, people on Zoom can't get them.
Right, but I'll leave them. I'll leave them.
James will make sure, Patty and James will make sure they get them.
Do you want the packs with them?
No.
Give them to James.
What do we need, two?
Two.
Yep.
I just also like to add, not trying to force anything tonight that we shouldn't be doing, but I, I think we really, you know, to the amount of effort and what we've done, you know, on our end of this project, um, you know, the thought of losing value, the future of this project, and as, as a community in town, a lot of concern and question about, about this stuff. I just hope that, um, I can stress it enough where I, I really like to focus on, on putting that moratorium in so we can, we can move forward in the right way. Thank you.
Anybody else to speak?
Hi, everybody. Thank you for the job that you do. I am Beth O'Connor. I am your state representative. I also, I served on the Energy Utilities and Technology Committee for four years, and now I serve on Environment and Natural Resources. I have a lot of concerns about this project that is going in. I have a lot of concerns about solar energy going in across the state, and I bring this to you because I'm not sure if you're aware, but as we speak, um, what we have had, what has hit us today is called a solar, it's a solar gold rush. And there's a lot of different reasons that that happened. Law's changed, and we have an extremely generous net metering law in the state of Maine. Those are 20-year contracts. As we speak, there are 600 to 700, um, projects in the queue for solar energy across the state of Maine. This has concerned a lot of different towns. So far, 16 towns have put moratoriums on solar, and one of the reasons that they did it is because of the cost to non-solar customers. With those 600 to 700 projects, if all of those are built, um, the public advocate, William Hardwood, said that the cost on non-solar customers would reach $7.2 billion over the life of those contracts. He broke it down. It's about $360 million annually. That is, I mean, the cost is a huge problem. The more they expand, the more that they're going to cost across the state. And that is, that's a huge concern of mine. I'm always trying to watch out for the electric rate payers' dollars as well as the taxpayers' dollars. And the other reason that I'm really concerned about this is I heard the planning board say that the other, um, array that was put down on 236, they have something in place that is, um, that would prohibit any solar panel or piece of equipment from being disposed of in the state of Maine. And the reason that I bring this up is because our, our landfills are filling. It's extremely difficult, as you all can imagine, to put a landfill anywhere. It's going to be a real big problem. Nobody wants one in their backyard. And, um, what the state of Maine is doing right now is in the process, and this bill will probably pass within the next week and be signed by the governor, is they have, um, they're prohibiting out-of-state waste from coming into the state of Maine. That matters because if we're not going to take other individual waste, bulk waste, different types of waste, why should we expect other towns or other states to take our waste? So I really think that that's something that, that should be looked at. And I also know there's another reason that, um, we don't put them in residential districts. The reason that that shouldn't be done is because it does devalue property. When you devalue property, you're taking away the property rights of individuals who, they know what they bought, especially in this development, they know what they bought, they know why they bought it, and they want to stay there, and they want to enjoy what they spent their good hard dollars, their hard-earned dollars on. So I have a lot of information on solar, on the costs. I think one of the things that I wanted to leave you with was this, and this comes from Lu Fang. He has been, um, in the solar industry since 1976, and he reported to IREA, which is the International Renewable Energy Association. And he said, "The problem of solar panel disposal will explode with full force in two or three decades and wreck the environment because it's a huge amount of waste, and they're not easy to recycle." That remains so. This is recent as well. The reality is there's a problem now, and it's not going to, and it is going to get larger, expanding as rapidly as the PV industry has expanded 10 years ago. Contrary to the previous assumptions, pollutants such as lead, carcinogenic cadmium, and arsenic can, can be almost completely washed out of the fragments of solar molecules over a period of several months, for example, just by rainwater. I think those are things that we all need to consider as the solar industry grows. We do not want that to be our next, um, superfund site. We do not want to have to clean up those messes. It, it, we should be a lot more careful, especially, like I said, in residential neighborhoods. And there's, as we all know, there's a lot of wells in this, in this town. And I don't know about you, but I wouldn't want cadmium and arsenic and lead leaking into my well, wicking into my well. And I thank you very much for your consideration, and again, thank you for the job that you do, and I hope that you would put on a, put a solar moratorium on until we can get, dig into these issues deeper. Thank you.
Anybody else to speak?
Good evening. My name's Alyssa Brunner. I live on Cider Barrel Lane in Burwick here, which is part of the Heritage Estates, which abuts the solar array. I'm also requesting a moratorium be put on this as well because I do think we need some more information. The town already has three solar arrays, and this would make the fourth one in a residential neighborhood. So I just feel that we need some more information and possibly change of ordinance to maybe limit the location of where these are put and to potentially more commercial zoning and not residential. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name's Pat Bedard. 1347 South Street, Portsmouth, New Hampshire. I'm the attorney, and my office is in Elliott, Maine. I just wanted to talk very briefly and not take a lot of time. I'm the one who wrote the letter. Steve asked me to be involved in just, he asked me the question, can the town put a moratorium on solar? And is it allowed and how it would work? I first got involved when we looked at the project that was passed. I think, I didn't realize that maybe as many as two solar farms already approved. Appears they were approved as essential services. They likely weren't, and I think what the planning board realized is that probably wasn't appropriate. It's really not an electrical facility. It's more the production of power. It's commercial production of power. It's in a way that's not as, as, as obnoxious to most people as like a coal-fired power plant or other ways to produce power, but it's production of power. I think the planning board then put in at least some regulations, making sure it wouldn't get near the water in the village district, those kind of areas. But it's still in some of the rural areas. I think that's why people have spoken tonight in their concern about how it affects residential values, that it's too close to residences. And Steve asked me to put the letter together and attach some statutes, or at least look at this. And there were really three questions because you know there's a pending application before the planning board. The first question is, can you put a moratorium on? May law allows that. I'm happy to hand out the statute. You're probably aware of this already. It's in section 4356, title 30A, MRSA. It allows a moratorium in certain circumstances. A lot of communities, we quickly found six, I think, throughout the state that have put moratoriums on. I was told by Beth tonight, this many is 18. So you can be, it can, moratorium for 180 days. There's one case in Maine, not from the Supreme Court, but from the business court that suggests the moratorium could, would also stay, any pending applications. You could put that in the moratorium, and that's what South Burwick did. I have a copy of their, um, moratorium that they passed. So the first part of it is easy. I can read the statute, but I don't think I need to. It allows if, if the town selectman or the town believes that there's a danger to the public and, and the public property, it can place a moratorium. It doesn't mean solar farms or solar arrays are going to be illegal. It just gives the town time to pause and figure out, okay, where do we want these? Should we have decommissioning plans, you know, what are the rules?
If I can interrupt you right now, this is not a public hearing. It is not a legal hearing. Is, please make your point. We don't need to go into the details.
That's fine. Thank you.
We also, a lot of what you're saying right now, Mr. Clement, did hand out to us.
Okay. Thank you. So I'll, I'll be brief. He asked for the moratorium to make sure that that could be done. I told him it could be. The second part was how it was going to affect a pending application. Was that okay, that it affected the pending application? And I said there was a main Supreme Court case that suggested it could, that, that once you put in, if you put in a new ordinance, it would also apply to the current application as pending for the planning board. Because that's important to know that, whether there are rights, and, and, in other words, how would it affect the current plan that, for solar array that has brought some of the people here tonight? Would it affect that pending application? It's up to the town of Burwick to make it effective. There's a case out of Kidderi that basically allowed for that to apply to a pending application. So those were a couple of questions that I answered. It's in the letter. If there's any questions about that, I'm happy to answer. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further public comment? Thank you for your public comment. Is, um, as we said, as I said at the beginning, this is just a public comment. It's not a public hearing. We are not going to take any action on this tonight. Is, uh, we can take it up at our next meeting, and we can discuss it at that time as an official piece of our agenda. Thank you.
Tom, can I just add, I do appreciate you providing this information. And if we are going to put it on the agenda, if you could provide the information prior to the meeting so we're not just looking at it right here and then being asked to make a decision.
Thank you.
That would be helpful.
Okay. Will do. Thank you.
That brings us to our next. Is, uh, we have no public hearing. Reports of committees. We have none. Well, actually, James, have we heard anything back from WB Mason?
No, we have not yet.
No. Yeah. I'm referring back to, uh, we have a committee looking at the town hall here. Is, uh, we, James and I did a walkthrough with somebody from WB Mason a few weeks ago to look at, um, the needs we have and how we might update our equipment and better use our spaces. Yeah, we're waiting for that to come back. We have no department reports. We have appointments. We have two alternates looking to be on the planning board and one alternate looking to move up. Why don't we take, uh, you know, Phil Roy first? Is, um, he's the alternate at this time. He's looking to move up to become a full-time. Is usually that's a pretty straightforward thing. Is, Mike, do you have anything to say?
Hi. Mike Leroux, 263 Pine Hill Road, Chair of the Planning Board. Um, I recommend Phil to a full-time member. Um, he's been, he's very active. He's been a good help. Yeah.
Is, uh, any questions about Phil or anything?
I'll start them.
Is, uh, do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion that we appoint Phil Roy from alternate to full-time position on the planning board.
Terms ends in?
Term ends in December 2023.
All right. Very good. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second the motion.
Okay.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? If not, I'll go through the roll. Is Mark?
Yes.
Noah?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
And myself as a yes. And then we have John Lafayette Jr. and Matthew Henry looking to be alternate members. We only have one position, right?
Can I say something real quick?
Yeah, yeah, right, right.
There was a misunderstanding with Matt. I told him, um, that it was next meeting, so he was assuming that the next meeting, he was going to be coming here. So that's, that's the reason why he's not here today. He didn't know until 5:10 when James called him, was like, hey, I'll see you tonight. No, he didn't know. So I just wanted to let, make that.
Should we table it then?
Yeah.
I wonder, appropriate to give him the opportunity?
Right, right. Yeah, we always like to give somebody new the opportunity to speak before us, so.
I make a motion that we table this vote until the next meeting, and both parties can be here.
Just going to say it's John here. If you want to listen to John and...
Oh, you are here.
I can go for the next meeting if, you know, whatever you guys want.
Yeah, we, we just, it's somebody new coming onto the board. We like to be able to look at them personally and question them, you know, especially if there are two people. There's, uh, well, is if you can make it at the next meeting, we'd appreciate that. When is our next meeting? Patty?
April 12.
April 12.
Is that okay with you?
All right. So.
Okay.
So you can let Matt know also? All right. We, so we have a, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Uh, second that we table the appointment for the alternate members of John Lafayette and Matthew Henry.
All right. We have a motion, a second to table that. Is, do, I'll go through the roll. Is Mark?
Yes.
Noah?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Mike?
Ah, yes.
And myself as a yes. Unfinished business. We have none. Town manager's report.
The, um, budget details, we posted a town website under town manager, so it'll be available for everyone to review. Gets posted every year. I found that out on every March 31st, that was the most up-to-date budget. And, um, so look for that shortly after that. Different piece of business. I'm going to need a vote, um, from the board this evening to quitclaim the property at 17 Cranberry Meadow Road back to the owner after payment is made. This is an old land purchase installment contract that we have been in court mediation for since January, and they have a deadline of March 31st to pay all taxes, interest, fees, and legal fees in full, no later than March 31st. Once the payment is received, we will record the, uh, the deed. And the vote is required for this evening because otherwise we won't be able to have enough time to make sure it's on the tax rolls for 2023. So it's, um, the motion would be, um, to authorize a quitclaim to 17 Cranberry Meadow as long as they pay all their taxes, interest, and fees.
Have they paid that at this time?
They have not.
Okay.
But they would be required to pay it by...
The 31st in order for it to go through. Do we have a motion?
Uh, I move that we, um, approve the quitclaim deed as long as all taxes and fees are paid by March 31st.
Yeah.
Do we have a second?
A second.
Any further discussion? If not, I'll go through the roll. Is Mark?
Yes.
Noah?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
And myself as a yes.
I have a quick presentation on the Diggle Hole Ones and the congressional-directed spending funding we received. So we received, um, $3 million for, $3.1 million for infrastructure and downtown vehicle, bicycle, and pedestrian improvements downtown. We, we sent in an earmark through Susan Collins, who's on the Appropriations Committee in the Senate. We received $3,142,000, and that adds to the $750,000 we also have been awarded previously. So the next steps. Diggle Hole Ones, the core tenant of Diggle Hole Ones is addressing the stormwater. So you can see, uh, the blue line, a lot of stormwater comes down Pine Hill. There's also a creek there that runs along the property line of the fire station. It all gets piped through the edge site. And what Great Falls Construction is doing is upgrading their pipe, actually moving it to the center, upgrading it from 40-inch pipe to a 60-inch pipe, which means the red arrow there, we're also going to have to upsize our pipe to be able to get it to the Salmon Falls River. So it'll increase our stormwater capacity, help us handle higher-intensity floods. And that also, that's in the exact area of the CAX project. So we're going to need to coordinate not only stormwater, but bringing the utilities on the ground. I mean, Burwick has a, a very picturesque, um, Maine downtown. To me, one of the first things I notice in this picture are the, the power lines. So during, um, these projects, even the stormwater, the utilities is coordinating all that and making it all happen.
So the secondary goal is to put all the power lines underneath?
Yep. Yep. And to help coordinate on this, it's, um, we'll put out a request for qualifications, looking at either, um, we could potentially partner with Sabego Technics, who is the edges engineer. We could partner with VHB, who's very familiar with the town and has done two traffic studies. We could partner with Goro Palmer, who is engineering the CAX project and has been very impressive to work with. Or there's another, there could be another firm that, um, answers our call. So the, the projects, the next projects, the Sawmill Hill and School Street project is just to the right of this. This segment here is replacement of the traffic light is the first major improvement. It'll improve the technology, which will improve the traffic timings, but also, along with this project, is tidying up that intersection, potentially looking at, they call it geometric improvements. So whether the lanes, it's optimizing the space to make it...
And making it safe for pedestrians.
Make it safe.
That's the biggest thing for me.
Yep.
And you're moving the crosswalk to do that.
We're doing a lot of different...
Watching how it's going to come out of the edge too, right? Because it's going to have one more street.
Okay.
Absolutely. That's, and then that goes hand-in-hand. This connects to that area because we got to figure out that outlet to the bridge intersection that, that ties into the Village Square, which ties into the segment along Sullivan Street. So it's about, I, I call optimizing it, streetscaping, the street amenities. It's making it safer. It's making more, more efficient. And that's, this is the conceptual level of the Sawmill Hill and School Street, AKA the CAX project. And this is the project that's almost fully engineered and ready for construction in 2024. Hopefully, 2023, um, you know, even we can do some improvement this summer. Get the, get some of the utilities on the ground, get the stormwater done, and then 2024, street improvements. And we've successfully dug a hole once. And then the next, the other side of the CAX project is the School Street, which also includes the intersection of Main Street and School Street, and then the intersection of Wilson School and Allen, replacing the lights, making the intersection tighter and safer to cross. We've got $4 million. There's many more funding opportunities coming down the line. Conveniently enough, DOT just put in a project called the Village Partnership Initiative, and it's all about, Village projects can vary from small-town spot improvements to large, once-in-a-lifetime investments. All about improving downtowns. So it's tailor-made for what we're doing. And also, there's another round of congressionally direct spending, and we can send that through our representatives, not only Susan Collins, but Angus King, Shelley Pingree, through CAX. And I think an excellent candidate for funding is to do our Great Falls Park and MS4 Upfall 7 project, which is about a million and a half-dollar project. But it's integrated in with the downtown, and I think it'd be really, really competitive project. Last thing, impact fees. I actually revisited this, and I think I was overthinking it. By recommendation, and this also goes hand-in-hand with Diggle Hole Ones, would be... By recommendation, and this also goes hand in hand with Diggle Hall 1s, would be to for any multifamily, every multifamily by design has to be on town infrastructure. And also, multifamilies, they're not the projects that are taking up open space in rural areas. So this is just a first kind of crack at it to not, for any apartment building, instead of taking open space fees, we take that money and put it towards infrastructure. For any single-family house, keep it as is, keep all the open space, goes to there because it's mostly the single-family houses out in R3.
All right.
You know, that's the parts that are actually affecting open space. So that's a quick update on Diggle Hall 1s. I'm done with my manager's report, happy to answer any questions, if there's any.
I wanna, you know, we've talked about the impact fees and what we could do to change things around. And I really like that idea, you know, taking that money and swapping it around a little bit. Is, you know, because we've talked about, you know, the sidewalks downtown and how poor they are. So things like that would, you know, go towards that. So I really like that idea.
Yeah.
So I just also want to comment that, you know, James said there's more funding. A lot of the reasons I feel that we're getting the funding we have now is our initial grant from cleaning up the tannery. Is we were told at that time that, you know, the governments, the federal purse strings like to give money to successful projects. So every time we can do something and complete it, it gives them more incentive to throw more money at us, which I'm all in favor of.
Yeah.
I also think that has to do with something with the person who's writing those grants, because he's very good at it. And it's not, it's not an easy task. I've, I've tried it, it's not fun. But yeah, somebody's very talented over there.
We, we've had, we've had a lot of help with that. Is the, the first grants with, for the tannery site, Rick Vandenberg had a lot to do with that. Is, so, we've been very fortunate, so. And on top of what James just said, I will, I have a, go into Selectment Communications. Is, I have a letter from Susan Collins' office saying that we have been given $2.8 million to be doing the water utilities upgrades in the final appropriations bill. So again, we have more money coming our way. And I also got a letter from the York County Commissioners. As you may remember, James and I went up there a couple of weeks back to talk about abatement denial that we had. Is they took it under advisement, did their, had, do their due diligence. And I'm happy to report that they voted to affirm, affirm the town's denial. Is basically is because of the application was filed after the fact. So is, that worked out well for us also. All right. That brings us to our accounts payable warrants. There's a payroll warrant number 56 for March 17th, 2022, for the amount of $76,962.74. We have an account payable warrant number 58 for March 22nd, 2022, for the amount of $374,663.90. And we have a payroll warrant number 57 for March 24th, 2022, for the amount of $73,070.76. I'll make a motion to pay our bills.
Second.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. No further discussion, I'll go through the roll. Is Mike?
Yes.
Noah?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
And myself is a yes. All right, that brings us to new business. Lease purchase agreement.
This is the dump truck for Public Works. We're getting agents, we actually have one truck that's questionable if it's gonna pass inspection. So this is an effort to stay ahead on that. Actually have, so what I need is a a vote to authorize the lease agreement and actually have the motion right here. I can give it to you.
The motion's in everyone's book.
Oh, okay, sorry. Thanks, Patty.
All right.
It's under Exhibit A.
Other than, other than being really expensive, are there any big surprises?
No. Just, it's over a certain threshold for costs, so that's why we go through this process. Some of our leases, they're approved through
Are we looking for a motion?
What's that?
Is that what you're doing, looking for a motion?
Yeah, well, yep, I will be, I'm just looking at this as all right. So this is the, the whole, the whole motion, huh? I'll read, I'll read it out. "A capital acquisition project consistent of the lease purchase of 1, 2022, Western Star 4,700 single-axle dump truck along with associated equipment and accessories is hereby approved. Two, that your municipal lease purchase agreement with Andras Gorgon Bank for an aggregate principal amount of $250,425 at a tax-exempt rate of 2.93%. The terms of which are more fully described in the bank's March 8th, 2022 municipal lease purchase proposal is hereby adopted. And three, that the Chair of the Select Board, the Town Manager, or Treasurer are all separately authorized to execute the lease with the bank and all other documents reasonably necessary to accomplish the purpose of this vote, as the documents may require. And four, that the said lease with the bank is designated a qualified tax-exempt obligation for the town for the 2022 calendar year pursuant to Section 265B3, the Internal Revenue Code of 1986 as amended." So, if somebody wants to make that motion?
I thought you just did, I was gonna second it. I was gonna second it.
I'll make the, all right, I made the motion.
I'll second it.
I was reading it for prosperity's sake. No questions? I figured I had a lot of experience from the last meeting reading the warrant, so.
How many dump trucks do we have right now? Just out of curiosity.
Yeah, I have to get that number back to you.
Okay.
They were, they were in pretty
I mean, I agree, I know they're, yeah.
Yeah, they're in pretty disarray.
And I know they're doing everything they can to keep those things running as best they can.
As expensive as they are, I mean, better now than in a year or two.
All right, we have a motion and a second. I'll go through the roll. Is Mike?
Yes.
Noah?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
And myself is a yes. All right. And that brings us to the Town Manager's six-month probation period review. Is, we, we held a review for James last week. Is, was it only last week? Two weeks ago.
Two weeks, yeah.
Two weeks ago, yep. Is, we found, found him wanting. Is, no, I, I, I think James has stepped up to the challenge. He, you know, we talked at length about everything. Is he recognizes where his deficiencies are, he's working to, you know, correct those. He's looking to increase his knowledge and taking more classes and making himself certified in more things. I have no problem with him, I think we made an excellent choice from the start. And is, anybody else have any comments about the review?
Oh, I think the review went well, there was a lot of dialogue back and forth. And I think he's making very good progress and I have no other, no other issues. It's very easy to, to connect with him if we have questions and he gets back to us really quickly, so.
So, is, is a six-month period with his review, comes with a 3% pay raise, retroactive back to his six-month hiring date.
Correct.
Is, had what we agreed on in the beginning. Do I have a motion?
I have a motion to
Accept the review?
Accept the review and increase Town Manager's pay by 3% as per agreed upon hiring.
I'll second the motion.
All right, any further discussion?
Mark, Noah?
If not, Mark?
Yes.
Noah? We lose you, Noah?
Spacebarrier, yes.
Okay, because I didn't know if you were refereeing another fight. Is Linda?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
And myself is a yes. I guess you're safe for another six months.
See you in six months, yeah. Yes, we have, do you want to do the bid opening?
Yep.
Just add it to new business.
Okay, is we have bid openings.
You guys want me to open or read them? I've done it both ways, where I just let you guys read them or I can read them?
I'll, I'll read them. I like, I like to be a little nose
These are the bid openings on what?
On the Diamond Hills Road Bridge.
Bridge, okay.
Prays Bridge as it's referred to. Is, back when they built in the present bridge, we able to talk to somebody who worked on the original wooden bridge there back in the early 1900s, which was very interesting. All right. This is Calderwood Engineering. Let's see, lump sum bid price. Here.
Can you say that again, Tom?
What's that?
I'm sorry, can you say that again?
Is that addressed to Calderwood? Because there wasn't, yep?
That should, that shouldn't be from us, no. Should be right on
Let's move in, turn track. Oh, T-Buck Construction over here, it does read in the cover page where it says Calderwood Engineering, will not post bid amendment. Okay, sorry about that. This is T-Buck Construction out of Ternamane. All right. And this one is from CPM Construction out of Freeport, Maine. Is lump sum bid price of $1,441,400, 400, yeah, $1,441,400. We have Scott Construction out of Portland, Maine. We have a lump sum of $1,118,800. Wickson Construction. You want to make sure you know who they came from. And Wickson. Wickson Construction out of Ry, New Hampshire. Is lump sum of $1,890,510. And those are our four bids, which are all substantially higher than we all talked about if we knew we're coming. So is, we, we wanted 800,000. And the low bids, 118. Well, we'll have to look at those and take them under advisement. Maybe we can get some money out of the government for it. All right, any questions on the bids?
No, James, are you gonna make copies of those and send them around for us to look at, the specifics?
Yep. Are you surprised at the
I am, I would have been, oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
I am a little surprised, yeah, I would, I would have also been surprised if they came in 800,000. I'm surprised they were, I don't know, it's a pretty big spread, I guess.
Yeah.
700,000.
Yeah.
But it doesn't surprise me, they were a little over million. The market's crazy right now.
Yeah, we talked about that.
We've got contractors calling us and saying they, you know, they just can't get product for this year. We've got fabricators telling us they can, their shops are full for the next year until late 2023, so. Doesn't, I guess it doesn't surprise me that they're high.
Well, it's not even just the, you know, current climate, but it's like the stuff going on in Eastern Europe and like, I buy pewter for my business. Pewter is incredibly a cheap metal, or at least it used to be. In 2020, it was about $18 a pound. And I checked today and it was $35 a pound. And so in two years, it has doubled price and, you know, it's, that's the world we're living in right now, so.
Yeah, and that doesn't surprise me, I think the original, I think we upped our original engineer's estimate, but I think originally our estimate was from two years ago, if I remember correctly.
Right.
So it does, everything is doing that exact trend right now.
We talked about the condition of the bridge before it gets super dangerous. We think DOT might come and actually close the bridge.
It's rated five tons right now, is that correct?
Right.
Yeah.
Can we get your name for the record, please?
Jesse Helms.
Thank you.
Sorry about that. Any other questions on the bridge?
A lot.
Yeah. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you, yes.
All right, we have no quitclaim deeds, no abatements, second public comment. Nothing going on, we do have an executive session. I do not believe we're doing any votes in that, there's just no more for information. What we'll do as we usually do, we'll finish our meeting, go into an executive session and come back and just adjourn. Other business, non-agenda items, does anybody have anything to bring up? Is
Oh, I thought you were gonna
All right. If not, I, I will make
Have a good night.
Can you build the bridge?
What's that?
Can you build bridges?
I think I could cheaper somehow. Thanks, John.
Yep, all right. All right, I'm gonna make a motion, we go into an executive session under Title I, Subsection 405, 6A for a discussion of personnel.
I will second the motion.
We have a motion and a second. As I'll go through the roll. Is Mike?
Yes.
Noah?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
And myself is a yes. All right, just give us a few minutes to clear the air and we'll be right back. Hey, take care, Mike.
See you later.
Hey, Mike, before you leave, two mics here.